You know, the Robby and we said we met him because I'm acting. It was an idea that we got left. We got to hear.
What do you want?
We got to hear what we're right. He takes a grand in there for the other time. Drain for body scanning, he might not get on that. So we don't have much of that. Drain, some ground maybe.
Yes. I was really glad that I was able to talk about that. We, we actually tomorrow is the final one, one grand paid submitted. So that grant that we're hoping to purchase a lot of big ticket items.
That's not pretty good. What would something that nature stress do?
Um.
So.
Yeah. We thought we'd look at.
Six things can I have?
Well, there's another sixteen they didn't talk about definitely. It's in the budget too. Not just some things, so during that, that one came over, they have another six to add. The one definitely did.
They have a lot. They're up in their long.
Who's they go?
Then call you, I think it's a term.
It's, it's in our long. Just go ahead and go ahead and shoot the game when first there is solid fire. We'll go ahead and bow this, lead order. I wrote it all down, he did. Two cars here. Stick out my, my students here, Jerry Allen here, Andy Anderson, Joe Ross.
Here.
Hi, well.
You said?
Yeah, I see. All right. We'll go ahead and collaborate over the minutes. And if there's any corrections, additions. Follow that, not for a program. If I had that in the code. I had a motion to approve. I'll say that.
All right. Jerry and Junior.
So. Well, Maggie now here. All right, I'll, I'll let you have it.
All right, Sheriff. Make sure it's got the major scoring as far as what's going to go over his place.
Yeah, I'm gonna lose some belt on you a bit. Uh, we've been made aware of some grant opportunities through the Tennessee Corrections Institute. The items that we had put on the ARPA list are accepted as purchases under this grant. Really not a limit to how much they're spending on each county, it's just the whole amount of money. Lot of counties, more counties than not, have not applied for this grant.
Is there a match?
No. I understand, it's, it's a hundred percent. So I, I don't know how much they're willing to spend, but those big ticket items we listed in the grant. Uh, got new quotes. And, and we'll go from there and just see what they'll, they'll.
Right, what is the deadline? Why do you want a smaller deadline?
Can we hear that?
Uh, they have a good mistake, the counties that, that haven't applied for, we've gotten this grant, that it's a brickwork. Um, I went ahead and brought this because, you know, looking at the generator for the kitchen last time, the less we came in, turned fifty thousand. Uh, we've gotten a new. Uh, quote at a hundred fifty one thousand, so that's, that's the last that's still alive. Not asking for that tonight, um, but I don't know really what, what the grant's gonna step up and, and pay for, so this could come back if there's all the ones left. And my understanding is it's not the generator itself that's costing so much, it's the fact that the wiring and everything.
They didn't say.
Yes.
Yeah, I talked to Matt Chris.
Yeah, so tha- that's where the cost is coming in. So really, the only two, two items I was, I was gonna bring up tonight, I mentioned the Magnus truck engine, it's, it's still dead, engine's still ordered, you know, it's just not producing engines quick enough. Uh, that was eighty five hundred dollars, what's asked me down there. The other thing is, uh. The called electronic compliance gloves. And I, I put in there for seven of them, they're fifteen hundred ninety-five dollars a piece if we order more than two or three. There's also an electric armband and an electric shield. Now, the purpose of these things, we, we gotta watch the news, we know that, uh, you know, we're, we're back in the news, you know, use of force. These are, I guess you compare them to, to a taser. The electronic compliance gloves, something that would wear, charge them. Uh, if, if there is a combatant person in the jail, these would be used more for the jail. To say anybody isn't gonna come out of their cell. But instead of having to go in for the shield and the time or spray, um, these compliance gloves literally. Grab them and it tases them just like the taser would, full compliance. With, with very low voltage electricity and. No fight. That's what we look for, minimize lawsuits, minimize, uh. Entries to officers and inmates. We've got several officer, Chris Smith being one, or Chris, Chris McPee, got his nose broken. I do agree with the nose broken in the last couple of years. Just specified out of that, and I know you're, you're wondering, okay, what, what, what a total cost on these things be? And I think I have it right at seventeen thousand dollars, it would be no more than twenty thousand. Only reason I don't have a final total is there is a training that goes with this that would be required to take. I don't know what the cost on that and how many we would have to send, the training is nearly a thousand dollars per person. Obviously we'll send one or two and hopefully they can instruct the others to do the training.
So you want to amend that to minimum seventeen, Mike, in front?
Yes, sir. I know what I mean on the point, but, uh.
It's a fall, will you have to you think?
Well, it does, uh, this, this is. I, I was, they shot me with it, it works. It's, it's a good.
Go ahead and bring this up, it doesn't really make any good budget, but working on parts like I have for years.
Yeah.
I think that needs to be, when you bring intake of a prisoner, you need to go ahead and check, make sure that one of the pacemaker, I C D will come in. Just for liability reasons, because I would hate for you guys to use one, I know we need, and we need changes.
Right.
I'm just trying to make you.
There, there is a medical screening that they're supposed to go through.
Just really, because I need to see what happened.
It should start with bad on page like.
It should.
Uh, but, but really, that's, that's, that's only two things.
So those two you'd like to get tonight?
Yes, just truck engine and, you know, the, the clothes and.
So you need to go to Frank's with the full commission? Do you mind, do you need to go to Frank's with the full commission? Yeah, I just, it, it, not in discussion, you made a question on discussion.
Not really, we, we've scheduled, but it not, uh, announced yet, we're gonna have a workouts meeting, meeting on the twenty-third, before the next commission meeting, so. We might be, probably be a little discussion at that, um, so.
So. Listen. I don't have to do anything about the, because Brian said he couldn't wait to read it, Frank back. After he listed the grant, so yeah, I've identified a motion to, uh, carry these two items through the full commission. Carry my motion. All play right.
All right.
All hold lifetime.
Thank you.
Uh, you wait.
Just stand on here because I got a few things to hand out here. Um, I thought that if we have this, I'm gonna hand you, because that's why I was running late, it's funded. Quote that I've been waiting on since the fourth of January, making that in the nine, so we'll just start with this one. So one of them, the purpose behind this was. During December of last year, we found out that the generator that is at the Watson Center. Is obviously a key part for it, it's a whole military powered generator. So we had Lindsay Lake to come out and just give us assessment, give us an idea on the quote for. May have been. For bringing on a new generator, but with this new one, would include the fire department, which is not on the current generator that we have now.
So that's.
It would do the whole conference system. So, uh, this is what Paul Lindsay recommended for us, for, for that whole complex. He did say that, uh, that, so the price gone fairly significantly from the original quote I got. The original I got was about eighty-six thousand, so obviously with inflation. He did say because the age of the building and the, the structure of the building being in public jails, kinda like Brian was saying, there could be some other things considered, so we might back them in. Just a little bit, maybe like five thousand extra in case they were into something that they had to counter for in this, this quarter. This would replace the, the gin set that is at the B M A office, and it would replace, it would bring on the, the fire department office, which is not on the current, but. And this would be enough to operate that whole complex over there, whether we need to use it for sheltering, meetings, uh, government office space, we had a major event, whatever we needed for, it was what intention it's centered for.
Last time the power outage was, later when we were out, luckily Chad was like, get that golden. It's a warning center.
That we've used for warning center, we're using for.
Luckily we got to do it, it's separate.
Yeah, and it, it, right now, the fix that he put on it is, is still holding, um, we tested, I mean, it gets tested at least a full load once a month. And then it tests, uh, you know, just a, a run test, it does make sure the power is supposed to, it doesn't once a week, so.
That would be a different one of things, that ARPA was, my name was ARPA.
Well, I've got a few other ones, but that is, but this is, the other two were, the, the other's small because it's, it's radio. Sorry?
We're talking about that.
Sorry, uh, the others are radios, um, for the E M I truck. Here's the quote we graded, integrated, it's not that we have an updated quote, just to give you an idea of what we are for that one. These are the same radios that the sheriff's department got quoted, uh, on their last, uh, presentation. And pricing, when I, I, I talked to, to Brent Martin, who gave me a different price on the sheriff's department, so I don't know, maybe I thought we might. We could add one more to the sheriff's department purchase, that it would change the price around, uh, but this, this one is the exact same radio, exact same setup and everything. So I don't know why they wouldn't be on at that price as well.
This is for the E M I market too.
That one that's in your hand right here is, is the same as the sheriff's department's radio. And then this one right here is a V H F, an eight hundred radio, which V H F is what the, uh, fire department uses, is what the E N S uses. It's what, uh, highway department on. And then, uh, the eight hundred is like the state mutual aid channels. Where you can, uh, communicate, we have a major asset or something, uh, which the E M I will communicate with the state, the city, and other candidates as well. I apologize and have to hand you that, but yeah, with that, some of these, I, I still don't have a lot of that quote for very wide of order images, both of which I've been talking about. But the total project I have, that's one, uh, it is, it's three radios. In all, uh, there's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of, of seventy-five hundred dollars for three radios. And that's program installation and everything in the vehicles.
Just can you take swiftly, nine number one before you have to off to go?
Yeah, there's, th- those three radios give us, give me or anybody that comes after me, capability to, we need to take the, we have the cities counting for the city as well. Uh, and then it would give capability to communicate outside of the state and American, and the mutual aid channel and all those. Uh, the total cost that I have, I think here, on the generator and radios. Was. One oh six, five oh three, seventy-five.
I ask you.
Absolutely, go ahead.
So you said one is with the sheriff's department, can you not use one radio and hear everybody's?
No.
Any more, I don't, you know, I don't know what I'm doing, I didn't know that.
No, because the sheriff's department, several years ago, sheriff's department, research squad, uh, city fire scene, P D, uh, city two, he's all went to that motor turbo vehicle, U H F system. And it's a, it's, it's a proprietary system, so that's why, yeah, I would love to, I would love for everybody to be on the air. It would make things so much easier. But they got that coverage when they switched to this system, so I, I can see why they do it.
Now he can still come to the top of the night and morning and late, just like.
Right.
Certainly, yeah, really like.
Right.
Uh, do you have any questions?
Now, I have one more, but it doesn't matter, one way or another, because this was my idea, Robbie and I, we, he and I talked about it, and I presented this to the. Uh, past administration, prior to this ARPA money ever coming out. Um, this is actually originally the intended for the first round of COVID money that we got in twenty twenty-one. And we ended up buying sheriff's department cars and other things for that, so, um, just kinda give you that backstory, but this is. A building, uh, that I originally designed, quote unquote, to be a drive-through place to store equipment, had three drive-through days, but it was also a place to store supplies. And it was, my, my idea was to set it up behind the ground street and tie in another driveway to the, to, uh, what's the name of the drive back there that goes to the old airport? Um, to tie into that anyway, so you could drive it out, but if, if we needed to distribution of vaccine, like we're doing, we need to do distribution of water or whatever, any kind of supplies, people could drive through the building, and the people that were handing out the supplies and vaccine, whatever, would be indoors. But when it's not being used for that, it's places for, you know, bottles of water, cases of bottles of water that we got, um, the sand, and stuff that we just got, all that, so. That's what this is, uh, this quote here is the one that I was trying to get, because I just get it to me today, uh, after I've been asking for it since January. And why he quoted this the way that he did, I can tell you, because it's not, you have everything on this particular quote, the only thing missing is the concrete and. The overhead doors. So the total, the actual total cost of the piece that he quoted was eighty-two thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents. And that's.
It is different from the quote you gave me about my two.
It is, it, this one is the updated one, that they, he put the separate prices on it, you know? And I don't know why he quoted it the way that he did.
So he can't put it around you, what was your next option?
Well, I didn't have one at that time, because I didn't realize the, uh, what, you know, it, it. It's a little bit, it, it was really a long shot at that point anyway, um, but I was gonna try to, apparently, do it originally, uh, some of the COVID money, like I said, but. Uh, I, I, I don't really know, beyond work group after that.
I'll see if you like, what was it, any problem?
No, it's, it's.
Got a wire number?
No, um, it, it would be just some, some lights and really nothing hard at all, but I wouldn't even have put electric doors in there, some button, many roll doors.
My, I was my hand is going to be ten foot, but. Cause I don't have.
Drew, did you just say total eighty-one thousand?
Eighty-two.
This says thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, he didn't quote, he didn't put everything on that, on the quote, and like I said, I don't know why he did it.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
He sent it in an email, he had another copy, so he sent it in an email separately. It goes off, so.
But it was all concrete?
Yes, that, that, the issue. The eighty-two, eighty-two one ninety-five seventy-five, but the building labor, overhead doors, the concrete. Sorry, I thought I made a mistake. So like I said, that one right there was, you know, that's not, that's not happening at the mall, so I understand if you want to say that, uh, the other two projects are, are heavily.
Well, Drew, management will need more information on that, so I guess, and true location, so the management might not be about property, you know, that, they just want to. And, uh, the others that. You've got hit it, but Washington, I can understand radio, but I know party, okay, about where we. Will the body is, is there?
Yeah.
Well, the generator something that we, I think we put off, put off, should have been done. I, I think it's, it's, most of you should be able to have any training.
No, I know every day, the generator and radio should be consistent.
Thank you for that question.
And with the fire department not being on the generator currently, if we were to have something, they can't, they can't utilize their office, so this would, this would help them with.
They're not close to that, we had several people for ownership. They get, they're very good.
You know, we've done for our main power station, so, you know.
Can I ask a question, or a little quick question, says Megan here. Do, can you, like, give us, like, an estimate of, like, our running balance is gonna be on, I mean, I know that's kind of, but as far as what we've already committed, purchase, what we started with?
What we had approved as, uh, the last commission meeting, um, very fully approved, approved, um, is four million one hundred fourteen thousand two hundred eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
All right, we've got a motion, second.
What is it?
That we just, for the radio and the generator excluded.
Both set the radio, both set the radio.
And, uh, cause I understand how the, you can't copy, so, you know, Robbie knows, here's doing, I mean.
It's what we're talking about.
I'll, I'll, yeah, we see, we've got left on our, you know, we got prior for us, so.
Well, we're talking about the one hundred and six thousand.
Well, we see.
Correct.
One of those, yeah, I don't.
And we're just gonna say this thing, the quote may change, or you get better, or you get maybe before our meeting, about the twenty-seventh. But we're just going to pass this to the commission for them to look at. And the quote may be a little bit different, you know, it could be the full commission, I would recommend for them to look at, okay?
I don't see why you couldn't cook tail on the sheriff's department, I, I don't know why you wouldn't do that.
Yeah, and, and, and looking at their quote, uh, the actual quote on my radio is just a little bit cheaper, but again, they were done to different times by different people, so. I, I really think we can get a hand in generator too, we may be able to combine with some purchase of truck drivers too, get a little bit of the break, but.
That's why, it's not changing.
We have pride.
Right.
Our commission meeting, we've got our time, we get, all we're doing, we've got the whole commission, we can. All right, we have a motion, it's like. All right, all right, all pub, now, like I said, this is just from what the commission, it could, it has to change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are Doug, uh, the rest of these not here now, here's why, they have a job, still in the hospital, so, uh, he has to present this, we can call if we need to. You have two quotes. Uh, one is a H P Design Dev T eight thirty. Uh, the price of it is six thousand five ninety-five, have an option there. The other's twenty-six hundred, with a ten thousand nine ninety-five. Uh, they both have, uh, offered this similar, same capabilities, except the twenty-six hundred's a little more high-tech, my recommendation to Doug is to go with the, uh, lesser of the two, the six thousand five ninety-five. Uh, for efficient discussion, that's how much the data needs, currently, right now, at the dean's office, if you go down again, if Doug has to go to the election, the system for utility buildings to scan maps and plaques in. Uh, this is what I have to do here, he can also print, print them off at the end where other people make copies.
So I think the question that we've had in the past, and he was not here, is, is these recurring costs?
Well, if we find out, right, we know, we don't have to do the option, we just, if it ever tears open, they just have to fix that.
The maintenance crew is an option.
It is an option, yes. Yeah, we have to correct, but my recommendation is.
We would only be a pretty purchase.
Purchase of lives, yes. Of the sixty-five ninety-five or the ten nine ninety-five, right. I said, Doug has no call, the lesser of the two will, will be sufficient for his office.
So we're doing six five nine five, five six.
Well, no, not five six, he's gotta do something he can purchase through his own.
So are we doing six five?
Yes. Any, any question?
Any question? Not a hundred and ninety, most of it, send it to the full commission. Joe Ross. I can, like, all play right.
No.
All hold lifetime. Right, send it to the full commission. New business up here.
Yeah, I'll take care of it. Under new business, uh, discussing further legal action provision facility, I think in fact, it's, uh, old H F R design, remember Sammy Glass, he's a, he's an engineer with the company. Uh, driving back to Tennessee, I work with Sammy for the projects, uh, Sammy's currently, uh, working with the Chester County Election Commission. Uh, they voted, uh, I guess last vote, proceeded to do the facility, uh, they had you sketch out, design ten different.
Uh, a- after we got under contract, we did, uh, we did marketing with, uh, Patty Bass over there, and, uh, we came up with four or five plans. Variations of what she was looking at, uh, and then we kinda tightened those up, so in, in total, about eight, it's kind of eight variations, uh, is what we've come through. Um, initially, they were looking at about a five thousand square foot building, uh, the house, you know, the offices and early voting areas and some storage. Um, in our, working with her, we kind of built that down a little bit, uh, to around forty-eight, I think it was forty-seven, eighty, uh, that's kind of where the square footage is right now. Um, their, their county commission, uh, approved up to one point two million, uh, for the project, the cost, um, that would include our fees, the building itself. They have a pretty difficult site, uh, so there's a lot of site work involved in, uh, in that money, and whatever's left, hopefully she'll be able to buy some new furniture. Uh, so, uh, that's kind of what we're working with, uh, as far as the budget, uh, for that project. In, in talks with Robin and, and therefore, I think we're looking at very similar sized building, um, of, of around five thousand square feet, we might be able to, again, move away a little bit, but, uh, I think, uh, that, that budget.
That is, that, that's about two hundred feet dollars per foot, I guess that's what site work and everything.
Right.
That's y'all's, y'all had awesome looking building.
No, uh, we are, we are hoping to finish the drawings probably in about four to six weeks and have it out on the streets shortly thereafter, uh, to get firm, firm bids on the building, uh, but right now, I have. Uh, but right now, my estimates have us, for the building itself, right at a million dollars, maybe a little bit more. Uh, but like I said, they've got a very difficult site for, uh, has a pretty good slope on it, so we think that there might be some retaining walls and, uh, some grading utilities and things like that. That we wanted to make sure that's the money in there to protect.
Farm chapter, underground or, that, that, the, safe.
Safe.
The farm chapter that mentioned here, is that underground, so?
No.
Or is that just ready for?
It's just, uh, it's just a hardened area and we reduced that, uh, as well, mainly because of budget reasons. Uh, they have, um, a small, like twelve by twelve space for some files that they have to keep forever, I think it is, or very long time. And, uh, the utilities coming into the building, so that, that stays safe. Um, and, um, that, that's really the only safe room that they have. They could probably get everybody at work there, I think there's only two or three of them work there, so in an emergency, they could get in there, uh, if a storm came up real quick. But that's, that's a very expensive piece, uh, of the project, so we just try to minimize as much as we can do.
The other thing you guys can think about with this, we, we have available land, uh, obviously, the square footage is something you guys need to consider. Uh, if we will go up to five thousand, is what they predicted, if we will go a different size than that. Uh, location, this came up. Um, we have some land behind Vax estate, where the health department's building, that we already own. Uh, we should talk about that for two, four hours, election commission. I priced with laying that door to the Chevrolet place, out on South Broad. I was asking, I think it wasn't forty-nine, four, I was asking. Uh, so really, you know. We're going to have to make a decision on what kind of budget, we need a budget, what we want. There's two different options we can go with, as far as we as a county construct a building, then own the building, make name the building. Or, uh, I've talked with a investor, who's willing to, uh, build what we want and lease it to us on a ten-year lease and take over maintenance when we don't own it. Uh, that's a cheaper version, cheaper option. And ten years, we build a facility somewhere, house, pay the buyer, not stuff, with a building. So there's two different options on how you guys wanna, wanna go, but we need a budget, which you consider, um, something for us to operate on. Uh, recently, uh, there were a bid that went out. Through a government bid is about two hundred dollars a square foot, private bid is about one point five, about that. Uh, so, and that's only a good lot, that's not a lot to report. So you're looking at about two hundred dollars a square foot bid, uh, for private person comes in, obviously, they can do things cheaper, they, they have a lot, we just lease. I haven't seen, I haven't seen what they have, I know that, uh, looking at, you can squeeze down to forty-five or three thousand, maybe. But you gotta consider on election days, that how big the law is going to be full, uh, the amount of workspace and people checking in, checking out. So there, there's some barriers.
Can, can I say something?
Yeah, right, absolutely.
Storage is a huge problem for us, I mean, you've got fourteen precincts. And a lot of machines, equipment that's required and everything. Half of it is downstairs and Gary Pope's all, all office, the other half is still over there. The storage is a problem, I mean. Uh, the only way is to cut down on the storage is, is to liquidate precincts, you know? We don't wanna do that. But the storage is a big thing.
Yeah, that, that would hurt the building, the storage, it's worth just to count.
Uh, you know. The building right now is nice.
I have a question about storage, stuff that you don't have to have day to day, why could it not be stored here at work? I'm just asking, you know?
Well, one thing.
My job's trying to save a little money.
Well, the thing about it is, we've got fourteen dollar precincts, which means all these machines have to be protected and forever erected. So that means manhandling them out of the basement, I can mount the office there to haul them back.
Well, I hate renting stuff too. The one point two million dollars you could rent that building you rent right now, it's five years.
The little storage, we don't have it stored, you know?
General rule of thumb is for every hundred thousand dollars, just a ten thousand dollar lease. So if you, I just did math on a hundred and forty-five dollars a square, uh, on a five thousand square foot building, uh, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, so you're looking at about seven thousand dollar year lease. Didn't think of care of maintenance, if that's what you guys wanted. I don't think there's, we'll look at it.
This is not the main idea.
Oh, I'm sure not.
This is, this is what.
Well, we do it on.
Hey, thank you. I plan to have this after, I want to ask you guys to consider, you know, in, in fifteen, twenty years, you don't know what stores will lock, might not be that kind of store. You know, electronics stuff come up, things get smaller, so think about the long term, as, as far as, also, it needs building with respect about the long term.
That's, that's one of the discussions that we had with Chester County, uh, because they have their stuff kind of scattered out everywhere, wherever there's a spot. Uh, some of it is leaking, uh, and you've got this delicate electronic equipment that, uh, doesn't like to wash a whole lot. Uh, and that was, that was one of the main reasons that they wanted that storage, so that it would be there, uh, like I said earlier, they can kind of test everything in that storage area and then move it out into the early voting area. Uh, that, that space is pretty large as well, that's, uh, another quarter of the building, so. His offices, yes, a couple of thousand square feet is all that you need, but, uh, uh, to have the, the room to spread out for voting, to spread out for training, to spread out for, uh, programming the equipment, uh, and then like I said, just having it in a space that's new and weather tight, uh, was a big deal for Chester County, just to throw that out.
I think we need to do a study on the debt service.
What?
I said, I think we need to do a, a good study on our debt service, see where we at, how well.
Yeah, I was about to say, this, I think this, I've been here almost five years, I think this is the first building project we've been really proposing with.
I don't want to progress, I'll give you wrong, but I don't want us to get the checks we can and add, we know they have, you know? Wounds, you gotta be paid for.
That's, that's why I go back to the lease, you always got, if something was to happen, you can always get back at it, you know?
I'd be more about, uh.
As far as the.
We know, and, of course, a mountain to fire, we don't have a building that could be mounted, I guess, but I don't know. You know, we don't have that part of the building. I'm just saying, uh, some building problem, you know, not necessarily for that, you know, but. But I think, how the mayor looks more into this lease, uh.
I'll look into it. Got a guy ready to pull it through, but it's.
But that's what, seven thousand a year?
No, it depends on what it is, I mean, would really be, that's what we sit there and work, some little guy.
That, that's the option, yeah. See, I mean, I, I want the election office to have what they need, sometimes what you need, what you want through different things. We need to pay for what we need, I hope, I would.
Is the Chester County building listed complete?
No, I'm in the process.
There, where's the, I'm sorry, where's the lab?
Uh, it is just, I've got my directions correct, it's just north of the city hall. Uh, there was an old clinic there that is torn down, um, and that's the lot that they're doing.
So this right here, just a store of machines, so when you have a election, the machines has to be hauled out and need to pre-seed again, right? I'll have to maybe, I hauled them up here, to save the county money, it was gonna be six hundred and something dollars a hour for motors to come move that stuff. I wasn't ready to do all the things, something dollars. We hauled it up here, put it at a place, moved it out, I'm glad we did that out properly, I won't do that anymore. So, I walked up twenty-five stories that said in the round that you hauled. Uh, if, if, when it comes time to program the machines, they don't have to be hauled out to my office and programmed to this, I'm, I'm gonna ask my owners for that, I'm not gonna show you. So in other words, if you, if you got a building and you got the storage that you want, time for a lecture to come, they still would have to be hauled, so it's pre-seed and calibrated. Oh, yeah, they're calibrated, they're calibrated according to where they're located. Yeah, where they come in from Harvard, they got.
That's why I thought.
That's why you do that.
But I'm, you know, we don't want to end up with that building, that, that's not that far. We're gonna have to have a lease, right? Yeah. It was just a thought, I'm just one person.
Whatever we're.
I've got the plan, the seven plans that we went through, um, and I'm, I'm willing to share those with, I would probably copy, I'm willing to share those with Robin, so he can take a look at them. And if there's a plan there that kind of fits his needs, or at least he can say, no, we don't need that much storage, we don't need that much early voting, that office is way too extravagant for me. Uh, you know, those kind of things, and then we can look at it and tighten it up a little bit, um, but I, I'm more than happy to share these.
Oh, we know that we might do something, that's up, you know, we know we might do something, but.
Yeah.
We've been moving around.
Uh, and, and Chester County is very, very adamant about wanting to get in there before the twenty twenty-four elections, so, uh, we're, we're trying to accommodate there for that, uh.
That's probably not going to. Right. Twenty twenty-four is probably not going to.
All right, so, uh, obviously, you guys know what we're doing with this.
Yes, that's my opinion, you know, it's, I bet, you know? If we need more information, more options and stuff, you know?
Well, keep in mind, we are, you know, every day that we don't do something is a, a plate day, it's a closer, it's a twenty-four election. And we all know the building is a temporary building. Uh, so, uh, if we can go through the two different routes, right in front of the full commission, we can give you guys a lease option. Or we can do a, a build option, whichever you guys want to do. Or you guys may make, may, or make a decision to, uh, make it or go to the health department, that's where Aaron brought it.
Yeah, the health department, if you're in the discussion to the full commission, you know?
Let me ask you, let me tell you this, he's talking about us going to the health department, it's a sensibility, nobody remembers the other way around. It's not. And there's, ever so something over there, migrants is out there every day working on something. If it's not good enough for the health department, that's not good enough for us.
Oh, I might say, well, goodness sake, it's gonna be up to them.
I would, I know the fact.
Robin, we won't, we won't do nothing different than for what you need, I promise you. But I, I'm not, I'm personally not gonna say, yeah, period, if it weren't for me, and I would do it. Still, I have a lot more to do.
I'll have the three options for the full commission.
Robin, what's next election? Your city election, you know?
City election comes up in September, Parkers, Pop's rooms, and, and my wish.
So that's what we're saying. This carries discussion to the full commission. And we said, you know, y'all, y'all didn't know anything about this. I reckon that we have no recommendation part of my concern, now, I hope y'all agree with that, except for providing information, Robin's got a hold of it.
Well, yeah, I think, you know, I would guess like to make an intuitive decision on like whether to build, like we would need to know about how we're financing, because financing a one-time purchase.
That's why I said, yeah, the debt service, if we're at.
Cause if it was just rented, then we would just apportion that through the regular budget on a year-to-year basis, right?
Well, if I ain't mistaken, y'all talked about using some of the COVID money to help purchase some of these.
Well, here's the thing with COVID money, is, I mean, we're about to run out of it.
We're close, yeah.
So I said, I don't know what's left.
Well, it's Megan. Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what we have agreed to, but what's left, we know there's two, that's about, that's a variable number. The, uh, broadband from grid buy, and, and the others of the, uh, health department grid buy, or whatever. We hoping that Atlanta, worst least, could have a hope, but we need to know what we got left for you, you know? And as I say, we need to know about our debt services.
Megan's giving a good little spreadsheet here, and, and, and I just summarize it, but, like I mean, it kind of shows that if we get the high end of all these things, and part of it's, some of the things the sheriff is thinking, so, um, you know, some grab match, but if, if you get the high ends of those, those things, oh, the things that they discussed, I've heard, would be very close approaching within eight thousand dollars for a year.
That's what we need some hard paper, like that, we know there's very much, but the other's what we left at the high end.
Yeah.
Then we're private, everything else.
And I mean, that includes like some of this, like your, the A and E and A, and things we have approved, but even so. Money on it, I think that happens, I didn't. But I think it's gonna be my floor.
Y'all want a motion on that, if there's a, a pretty round, I think y'all want to motion on. They will, this is, I, I'll entertain motion, if we send all this information, and, and discuss it in the full commission. And I'll talk to them, I'm waiting, in a second, I'll play that.
Same. Too much when we go with it.
Okay.
Can't do that, that, like.
All right, so the next out is, uh, the L P R F grant. Next thing is the L P R F, uh, AQH is, uh, in your package. Uh, there's land out, next to Wilson Drive, uh, approximately three acres. Uh, you see, it's a sketch there, you know, AQH do, this is a playground, two covered buildings, walk-in track, ADA parking, ADA, uh, access to the playground. And a couple of ADA pieces of gear. Uh, this is a fifty, fifty grant, uh, I've talked to the school system, they voted tonight, they would, uh, give that land to us. Uh, and that can be used as part of the match, uh, with appraisal on that, it's around twelve thousand acre, not the best rough out, maybe fifteen. Depending on how you put it as far as Doug with, I mean, a local property or not, that can be counted four dollars match. Um, like I said, this is, uh, I think several years ago, and, uh, you guys, mission voted on a playground out east. Uh, it's a four hundred thousand dollar grant, it's two hundred thousand dollar match. Uh, so they obviously, but that's the paint walk-in track, uh, this is things that we project, turnkey. There's some things that we can do, fair and rote, we can do that in-house, we can talk to, uh, go to the rock, and see if people have us out of there. See the mulch, we can put the mulch down ourselves, and things that we can chip off, this has got to be included inside the grant, for calls, we will, we can do it in-house. And you're looking at this, this is a two-year project. So now the funding will come out this year. Built to the B, we've bought, built to the B in October, we're looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, one year. So we have a little bit for as far as funding years. And that's the debt service coming off, maybe two years, something like that. And, uh, just refinance all our CDs. Uh, we got about nine million dollars in CDs.
How much you say is coming out of debt service?
Yeah.
I said we bring it from the full commission, get a gun, I've been in it for a long time, if you wanna understand, I've always said that. Finish the part out, that's just to get the longer years, so I think it's something that we need to, this is right for the commission.
My, all of my ideas is make sure it's rather split, this.
Well, that's just block out there, there's no, no list on the, uh. Yeah, that's it.
And the steward will have me follow.
No, they always, they always own them out, you know.
All right, without motion, finish the full commission question.
Megan, so the grant application is.
Yes, the, the pre-application, we gotta have a resolution signed by March seventeenth. I'm gonna put that in front of you guys before September. I've got all the groundwork, uh, dinner meetings, had to go in front of two civic leagues, I've talked about it there. I've had a couple endorsements, it's been across the view, so we gotta put it through the commission. That's kind of where we go.
I will say, I think the idea of having that part of it, a popular idea for a while, it's just, you gotta take part in the matching plan is.
And that's the other, I'm glad they brought that up. The permission voting for matching playing back in September, that was, that we both know, and this followed Ron in line on that plane, so we're not getting enough track as part of the scope.
I, I have a motion to say, if we send this to the full commission. I'll play it out in half, half a lifetime.
Uh, discuss, uh.
Uh, partial exposition, I'm accepting, I'm emotional.
So, thank you, thank you.
All right, so all three discussed the things there. I'd like for you guys to, uh, allowing, opportunity to, uh, start doing some land shopping for future growth for a community center. Uh, or to fix it like an ax here, that someone did do ten years ago or so. I've got, I've got a few ideas and, and a location that might be beneficial that we purchase and do face projects, we can do something over the next ten years. Uh, or so, and combine some services into a center. Like EMA, like Drew, he's got requests, you know, we know the need for storage and he's talked about, uh, our county maintenance department, they need a place for their facilities, put all their stuff. UT Ag extension, uh, they're gonna be needing somewhere to go. Looking across the mid-south and what governor laid the, uh, his proposed budget, outpaying thirty-seven billion dollars for National Streets. Feel like an ax center somewhere toward between here and Parkers Crossroads could be fruitful for Anderson County, it's forest tourism dollars. And, uh, some positive growth, uh, for events. We have a lot of tractor pulls and, uh, horse, horse shows, different things like that. So I guess what I'm saying is, uh, one of the things I heard, we heard in their lectures, people were wanting to get there. Not just a place for basketball, store, or true place that we can have, uh, you know, we have our cold weather, we have a warm shelter, we have facilities for them to go to. As well, we do have a concert for someone to go to, uh, and that actually, we have somewhere available to our community. So to actually allow the embrace of it before you guys have planned for us to look forward to.
Any questions?
Don't do nothing there. I know.
I'm up for you to bring anything. Uh, I've, uh, I'll say, I know at one point, this has been COVID-ish, uh, we had a talk, several talks with Cody Wood and the Magries and some others about, you know, how, you know, we might be able to sort of share interests to get, you know, towards funding and some things like this. I don't know if this would be anything along the lines of what they have in mind at the time.
It is, so a community center right now, we'll go back to the LPRFs. If we can go ahead and find land, secure land, from team. In the next, after we get there on this park, we can take fifty-fifty matches, uh, the Nerrick County Mayor was able to secure several million dollars by utilizing USBA, uh, FEMA, uh, LPRF grants and really throw some things in there, but they have a place to do. So what I'm asking for you guys, our home is land shop, rents up forests or we, land's not getting any cheaper every day that we don't buy, it's just going up. I've, I've located some right now, before I get too much into the talks, I wanna make sure I've got everybody's buying. I don't wanna waste my time a third time with y'all stuff.
Well, it's come up a lot now, about a farmer's market, and I was gonna propose that. I don't want no building that's saved for this for one use tool now. A municipal, a building that can be utilized for a lot of things. Maybe senior citizens, there's, there's different things that can be used apart. I don't have problem looking. Probably here, if you seen that. If you ever seen the facility in Time Blue Park. You can look it up on, um.
The, the one I'm looking at is similar to the one in Coria. Uh, it's similar to the one in, uh, Tunica, the Miller's, the Miller Arena in Murfreesboro.
Time Blue is similar to the one in Coria.
Several years ago, uh, the state of Mississippi and I think Arkansas threw a lot of money at community type centers like that for events, cause they got shepherds inside, shepherds, placeful shepherds and all that. Uh, we, the community is a tourism bunch also. And obviously we know with blue old company, we're not going to probably score all these factors that they are around that hood. Gonna turn toward into a destination and tourism and things like that. Now, if I can give our county a loan to bring four thousand dollars in for people that don't live here, they have people here, keep our taxes low, so, so we can give away some. Just, just a thought. There again, the, the interest going in at National Streets. Uh, with the expansion of the lodges, you know, and spin-on lane, the rapid, you know, the premier field adds fish lake. You know, if we build this, if we find a facility close enough and includes certain things too, it could really benefit us from a hotel, hotel, a follow-up stuff like that.
Can you re-buy the land at Harvard Park?
I have sold it, I've sold it.
Go buy another cannon. Go buy another cannon.
But. I'll probably, I'll be bringing something for you guys. And, and I, let me say this, I'll say this right here. There's a funding mechanism in place to get our money back, important, pay for the land. Me and Megan, we've worked, we've, uh, sat down with the trustee, we had our, our, our CDs, we said, you're on a quarter percent interest, nothing. And, uh, we refinanced it, they're at four percent right now, so we can save thirty thousand dollars a year, several, a lot. So we can recoup some of that money here, mark that, pay for it. That way, it's, it's not really coming out every year, we just, it just goes back to that part. Uh, out of the interest on the CDs.
I wanna add, as far as rugby, I know we have like a, back at Driscoll, we have a custom rodeo with our facilities. They pay for about a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars for a weekend, to have one weekend, to have a rodeo there. I mean, it, and then of course, we're, we're lot on I forty. And if you think about how many people come from Texas to go up north, we would stop, when we travel through to Wyoming, you know, horse hotels, that's what it's called. Being ideal, going straight off of I forty for people to pay, they pay first stop, they pay third night, they pay, boy, the book up, or their horse ready, just to be able to get their horses out and be able to lift them on us for a few hours before they head out the next day. I mean, they're potentially, you know, make some money with things like that too. So that's just, that's all I can bring to the table, that's, oh, I know about horses, but I didn't know that, so, I mean, you know, we done it all through the class school. Still doing it polished, so, you know, there's potential there.
Forty years ago, I didn't think that regarding Manchester, did you? The boundary.
Hold my bomb. Guess I never read it, but I don't want to.
I have a problem. You know, I, I want full commission in on it.
I actually.
I don't have a problem.
Well, this, you guys are representatives of each district. And, uh, I did that inside the side, you guys, I represented by each. You know, it required assistance from the city, it requires assistance, assistance from your district, you know, uh, and, and out of district from, I guess I said. Uh, yeah, out of your district, you're part of the city, city part of the city, you know. Uh, so it requires assistance from them and getting them on board with helping out some utilities and helping out with some, uh, so.
I mean.
And it takes, it seems like everybody, it's like.
And, and we realized, there's nothing wrong with researching the, you know, cause y'all are looking for money that's not permissioned, bro.
We're in reaction, so I'll, I'll.
That's fine, though. But, mine, uh, but anyway, uh, I just have a problem with that, that's my personal opinion, so.
Well, me and Megan, we've looked at it, looked at the long term, we looked at when our debt, our, uh, debt services are coming off, when the, uh, when the jail is only paying off. We've looked at a lot of long-term scenarios for, this is not something that you really expect. It's not how you develop, you don't say you're developing a plane. Uh, instead of coming off the hill, that's why I'm, I won't say nothing bad about Lex and Here's a Chad, but we're real good about saying, it's a good idea for, go out to God, be able to support. You know, hey, let's build a playground, let's build a park, and just, we just set stuff down, we don't have a master, a master plan with the goals in mind. No, no faults, nobody's own, they just work with what they have. And sometimes that costs you money alone, you have to go back and redo things. So what I'm asking you is, allow me to come with a viable plan, with a face, with a face approach, let's do something meaningful, see for sixty years from now. That's, that's all I'm asking. What's that, yes?
Motion to recommend that full commission consider this.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I mean, we just, we can't.
Oh, listen.
I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I think it's just, I think it's good for somebody clear, like, we can't commit to anything until we have a plan.
I just wanna write here that you guys are on the same page, that you're, you're, cause I'm gonna, I'll write a plan for you guys, I want you to be open to it, receptive, is what I'm saying.
But then, you know yourself, you can't commit to nothing.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, I don't, I mean.
I, I wouldn't give me fifteen thousand dollars right there.
Well, that's a, that's a thing, I mean, I don't want you to go and say, hey, you know, property owner, I'm gonna have a million dollars, I can spend on a piece of property. And then I don't want you to have that mis-.
I'm saying.
Misinterpretation. I, listen, I would say, I think a event center, I think our community can use one, it's designed right, it's gonna hit all of our checkmarks. And we've got the funding mechanism to get it done without making the county, if you go broke, then I think, I think it's definitely worth looking at, I think there's enough public interest in it. But if it's thirty million dollars, well, that's a different, that's a different conversation than what I have in my mouth, and what each of these other permission, you know, budget would be.
So there's a study, there's, there's a study, I'll, I'll email you guys, uh, that, uh, Florence, Alabama did, when they did their visibility study analysis of the community. I would recommend us before we spend any, anything.
Well, I thought they did, did they not portion some funds to do a study like that?
They did a housing study.
Well, I thought they were gonna do one whenever they got that finished, that was for, or Cody or Jim has an interest in it.
They were looking more at the top of a, you know, like a community employee.
Also, that's fine, well, well, and so this would, and so that may be, maybe they're looking at different things altogether, it may, that they can't be going together.
What, what part of, what this, what I'm talking about doing is, is kind of being assessment, houses. And what do, if you have a firm committee, they, they, they do, that's what they do.
Right.
And, you know, my idea, I mean, hey, I, I think we need to hear this here today, but this is bizarre, or she doing with people, so.
And I might be ending that, if they have a firm come in. I mean, I just wanna keep everything, I've done, I've done this twenty-four years, just make sure that we're involved, permissioned.
Oh, you have to vote.
That's why. That's why I'm getting around to it. Is there any way to, how to contact each other?
Oh, yeah.
Places and just see what it.
Oh, yeah.
Plus the, I mean, as far as what the budget.
It's hard to, I can get their operating budgets, but as far as when they built them, they built them a decade ago or two decades ago. So it's kind of hard to see compared to dollars now.
I think once you're having to pay for maintenance and, and somebody to run it and your insurance on it.
Operating.
Is that gonna cover, are you gonna make enough off of that being?
So that's when that study comes in, if this is what this should be arranged, like that.
My aim word for that is, make sure it's locally used. We can't, that, that was a problem, I was saying, oh, we don't, we need to build a vendor market. We need something that can be used for a lot of it, you know. Like, as you said, rodeo.
Oh, I said rodeo, but I lost.
Oh, I think it's on tractor pulls, truck pulls.
Well, there's some, you, you look at the Cater Canyon.
I'm saying rodeo, cause I'm a little rodeo.
Cater Canyon has three hundred, uh, one fifty, one, one fifty by one fifty, I think that's what there is, that's what their center is right here. They gotta cover, it's concrete floors, one fifty by one fifty. They purchased land outside, you know, the Cater Canyon has land for their fair, it belongs to the municipality, along with Cater Canyon, Cater Canyon. They have that land, and I talked about Christian, they're, they're expanding, they're, they're adding on to theirs. You know, so what I'm looking at is identify a piece of land with, you know, that's okay, this is how much land we have, what we can do, start building, hold that. It's, like I said, it might take us thirty years to get what we have in vision, we may not have received.
Look what Jackson fixing to.
Yeah.
What, and then bring that, and, and, and fill that there, but then. Now, they turned down all those old service merchandise, see about every bit of it and put a big fence in there. You have, uh, reference to the dogs, for some reason, I don't know why, they put it out for a while.
All right, so.
That's a good thing.
Y'all hear more from me, no, man, y'all got questions, come out and say it. I, I'll see y'all bring it up on you when they, uh, go from there to, uh, like I said, land, especially when they get this, they go looking, it really goes up in.
The new motion, put them down.
I, I. Y'all voted for me, y'all just wanted to know.
Take a trip to Coria or somewhere that we can.
Well, what we could do is, uh, I could, uh, pull a small steering team together, that's what my intention, I'll put a small team together, that way it's just not, y'all here, y'all here for me, no, so. Uh, one thing I do have a question on, and I was at the solid waste meeting, uh, Megan, you might be able to answer this. The solid waste board, I made a motion for Mike to purchase some trailers. Some mid-barboard trailers, I think four of them, around, around fifteen thousand, fourteen?
Fourteen, something, something.
Does that have need to go, need to go for the solid waste, does it then still need to go from the budget committee or the full commission?
I mean, they're in on their budget, if they have it in their operating.
It's just not in their working, like, I don't have any.
It's still. Okay, all right, I haven't had a chance to talk to you, and I would check if it need to go from the full commission, if it skipped this or what.
If it, if it's in their working budget, don't go over.
Yeah, I understand, but it's still a.
Not, I'm hearing that.
Yeah, so need to bring this up, so, uh, solid waste, you have questions, four, Ram is on this board, and you're the chairman, I think you're on the. Uh, about four sixteen-foot trailers, uh, with a drop gate. Cause Chris Carwood rather, they, they need to come in and be reworked, and you can't take them out of rotation because you don't have nothing to replace them. Uh, so they recommended to you guys about bringing to the full commission the budget, then to purchase four new trailers for the solid waste department. Uh, it's under fifteen thousand, up to fifteen thousand.
I'm gonna purchase five tires too.
Yeah, that's a good budget. Yeah, that's what they're pushing.
Well, you know, now, no way, you know, you're on, how, what way else to go, uh, you know, we're not, we don't make a tax arrangement today.
Yeah, thank you for that, they need it.
Did one of y'all, like, make most happen, send a plug to a commission, let's say, Michael Hacks.
Yeah.
Uh, I have my motion.
I'm sorry.
And just, one, one discussion on that also is, we may need to recoup some of that money back, and take stuff to the sale for the, so. Commission's going to, uh, get rid of this surplus, uh, and take it to sale, we might go to recoup that money, so, might not be able to break it, just, we need to look some other committee.
Yeah, Megan, you just gotta figure out, uh, kind of from their budget line, I don't mark, we gotta be, we money, mark, okay?
So you only have a transfer when you get the initial amount?
Yeah.
You know, if you got the budget, it's good.
I looked at it, I didn't see it anymore.
As they said, that surplus stuff, you know, you can offset some of that.
And they're getting ready for a sale, so we're, we're starting to get all this stuff together.
We depleted our reserve balance this year, or, I mean, is that?
On solid waste or general?
Just from the general fund.
Oh.
I mean, I know we just spent a lot of money on, and I know it's, it is all the funding and everything too, I should, I mean, I just, I know fifteen thousand dollars for a lot.
Solid waste has, um.
About fifteen thousand.
Yeah, a lot of it.
Solid waste has.
Motion, Mac, during second, do you?
For what?
To send this item to the full commission.
The trailer.
The trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The transfer.
Oh, fair, I, I signed, hope.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just sent to them and, and she'll decide it's in there, not, the new money.
Okay.
And you have email of information that you.
Well, I'm just, I'm just talking to be picture-wise, I mean, every time, I, I'm not trying to be critical, because I mean, I'm on the board, but we have spent a lot of money this year, it seems like to me, and if not. We haven't had a tax increase since June, so, I mean, I just don't want to make sure that we're, we are aware of where this money is coming from, that we're not spending over our reserve balance. Because we haven't asked that question very often, and I mean, fifteen thousand dollars a year is not big in the scheme of a ten million dollar budget. But if our tax revenue, or what we're getting from the Sheriff's Department for inmate, is not where it has been, then we're depleting it to our reserve account, and it's taking me to be mindful of that. I try to look at the financial statements you send, I don't always get to, and I just.
You weren't in the meeting where I told her directly.
Well, the thing about, we're not doing.
Getting all jealous.
We're not doing a recurring cost on, on, some of this, this is making, makes it be done, and with the solid waste, this is making, this be done. I, I can understand for the recurring cost and.
Gets low.
Well, and that's, I was kind of asking her for what y'all, what we're talking about, and I think, I think she's kind of like, what are we talking about here, so, that's.
Solid waste does have its, um, as a unbesetment, so we can't be saying that we have to send the general.
Okay, thank you, good.
But as I, I told her, I mean, she can sign that direct, if she sees that we're trying to get to, you know, stand too much, that's her job.
Well, and, I'm not gonna let.
That's what you're telling us, that's her job.
Although, I like to say.
I don't go out there and ask that shit, how much you got, if it gets low with the reserve, we need to know it, we don't need.
County maintenance is done for the year.
Yes.
Unless it's emergency.
Yeah.
I want to tell them, I'll spend the money.
And we're getting close to that emergency, I mean, particularly March, when we put.
They have to march, they would like.
So we're getting closer, and any break of our corner, I would like to do this, we need to, we need to be viable for that.
Because there are some other things that are coming up, um, near the end of the year, uh, I'm, I hope all of you are aware, but there was a twenty-seventh payroll not budgeted. Uh, it's a mathematical anomaly, um, it happens about once every fourteen years or so, um, and it's going to be around twenty thousand dollars or so. So.
And you've done that tax, you know, we have to think about this, sometimes I know real pride with this stuff, think about it, you know, we've got about eight to nine percent inflation. And you know what we, county buys, is counting on eight to nine percent inflation, so sometimes you actually have stuff like that. I know we're doing real pride with that, it meant, I said, but now we may have to buy the bull, it's like we need a little bit more, you know, how that, because. We could sit and say, you're safe, well, we're taking in the same thing, but we're spending eight to nine percent over. And that's our job, it's, it's not our job to gallop people, but it's our, make sure it's just, and it's solid, you know. Well, I'm preaching to the choir, but, you know, it's just way out there, you know.
Well, and, and that's how, I'm just saying.
You said the same thing, yeah.
Well, yeah, and I'm not, I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that we're not overfit.
Right.
I mean.
It's there, and we gallop, that's good, that's for.
It's at the point where, um, most of the general fund hasn't really touched too much for the rest of the year, but it kind of, um, sorry, I have some voice issues, I can't talk very loud. Um, but. I think when firmly sixteen is a solid waste, because, okay, I have to look for them, just a little bit more than that.
I mean, we have services, we got to pay for, I'm not, you know, there's extra things that we can look at. Thank you.
So I got it. I had, just took a go to bring it up for discussion, y'all mind, um, I, uh, appreciate you including us in letting me know that you sent out to the department heads, I think that would be good to get the ball well in the right direction. As far as making sure we go through, but if I said, I think, um. I had spent some time last year, when we were kind of going through this, about looking at sort of the timelines, and are we supposed to like have a first vote? By the budget committee or something to review the budget by like April, early April, is that right?
Typically, um. That's kind of, well, we kind of have our own budget timeline, just because of the way we've done it previously, you can go based off of what you've previously done, as long as you're consistent with it.
Okay, so what, and that was my thing, is I, I looked at one of the controller pages, and it said like, vote by May, by April first initially, and I know these aren't part of things that we have to do, but. If that was the case, then we would be looking at a situation where our next budget committee meeting would be the opportunity to do that before then, so, um, I just thought it would be, we did have a lot of discussion about that last year, and I just want to make sure that we're all kind of on a similar target path, but. So like maybe sometime in April, we may need to review first version and start caring.
I would like to, um, have the department heads to present, um, to the budget committee, so they can at least be given their, um, their say, um, so I'm not making decisions. But also I'll be like guiding them, um, in the process, so they know how much they have to spend, um. I mean, not how much they have to spend, but just kind of a better guide of how they can utilize their money.
Yeah. Okay, I, I thought we need to strong establish that session, kind of understand.
That's like, you know, anytime you're discussing them, they say, well, why don't the eighth department head come for the budget committee, because that, and before we had centralized finance, I mean, twenty-four year, we did that. We would say it's night after night, going through every dollar, and then we go.
Yeah.
And that's the reason we both go centralized finance and our finance director to do that. I mean, I know we've got very smart people here on it, but that's their job, and that's why I feel comfortable with them going to the department head. And, and you know, she knows what she got, she knows what the budget did, and, and then report to us, you know. I, I, I just, I've just heard here before, people say, well, they need to come up here and talk to us, that's why we did the centralized finance, so we used to, we would need night after night going through, trying to cut a dollar here and a dollar there. And half of us didn't know what we knew.
We're gonna stay close to that timeline, okay?
Right, right, and I, right, and I understand, I just, again.
Yeah, I thought she was life says things out, and we, we went two weeks ago, maybe, I think we're gonna maybe get some, I was going to say.
And I, I just have one other thing I wanted to ask about in the discussion, when Megan sent out the monthly, um, reports, there was, it was noted about the issue with the county maintenance. Was it maintenance fund?
County buildings.
Buildings.
Already over a hundred percent.
Right, I, I'm just, did someone give me a brief, like, how do we get here, like, how do we, I mean, or, or what do we need to do in the future, or how do, or is this related to the elevator, or I don't?
Oh, I think some of it is the locks at the jail, or the locking system.
Okay, okay.
Um, so some of that is coming out of the liet, um, the liet reserve, um, some of it, they also have HVAC units, um, probably a lot of the general.
Okay.
Um, that was approved for some time ago, and then, um, so those are some big ticket items, but we did already amend the budget, um, we, I mean, did it by seven thirty, if I remember. There's just been some big ticket items.
Right, and so, I'm just thinking out loud, we just need to, if we're, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, when, if someone's kind of asking for something related to maintenance, like, we just need to be aware that that money is just not in that fund.
But how do I judge how one, unless it's just absolutely, um, necessary?
You being the lead department, we.
Yes, sir.
I've already been, I'll tell you the most of them, really, only three departments is gonna have, as you probably guessed, three, is gonna have issues. Uh, waste, sheriff's office, and I would have thought, that's our biggest ones, right, lady, what can you say?
Yeah.
Everybody else is pretty, uh, but they kind of got a hand with all the money, they did some local areas, thanks for how you guys come here. Most of the local parts are doing pretty good, but yes, sir, I would.
I feel like they just leave that this thing weighing walls and needs.
Yeah. I hope you.
We should have got through that with all.
Through the year, they did, yeah, I mean, there's most of that's in there, that's the seat, we're viable, yeah.
Well, we're gonna comment, anybody want? But then on this, well, I'm here, I have lots of the dinner, go ahead.
Come here.
And I'll play with that.